Would you please say and salute the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And next, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence in memory of Everett Pulaski. Thank you. The next thing on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for our last meeting October 20th.
I'm making motion we approve the minutes for the meeting of October 20.
So there's a motion by Ken, second by Harold to approve the minutes of our last meeting. All those in favor? Thank you. Well, next are department reports and. Dan, you want to go?
How you doing? Fire Department, we had Halloween event on Sunday, the 31st went very well. We had 592 trick or treaters pass through the door. Almost a record. Two years ago, I think we had a little over 600, 630 kids. So we had a few drop off in the past two years. Not too bad. Lot of positive comments from the public. As you guys know, they come in, use the bathroom, place to sit, take a break, grab a bite to eat. In fact, we ran out of food, our auxiliary in two hours. Six, so. Yeah, that was, that was a success. Everett Pulaski's funeral, thank you for, for mentioning him this evening. Funeral went really, really good today. Great, great turnout, pillar of the community. Fifty year veteran of the fire department. So it was a nice send off. Engine 81 was his truck that he was in charge of, led the procession through town. Had a nice fire department service up at the Ridge Cemetery and laid him to rest. And then everybody came back to the center station after and filled the whole bays with family and friends and had a nice reception. So that was, that was very lovely. The only other thing I got is next week, we're taking the juniors on their field trip to New York City. So we'll be gone Thursday and Friday. And hopefully I'll be back Friday night. Down in New York City. So we've got a packed, packed full agenda. I think I detailed that last time. So I won't bore you again with that. But any questions for the fire department? Thank you.
Thank you.
Doug, can I just say something to so for anyone who's going to be speaking, the speakers are up here in the ceiling. And we have people who are zooming in from, I, I think the tendency is to talk low because we're so close to each other here. But try to remember that we have people watching at home and just want to make sure the volume is up so they can hear it. Thank you.
Dan, Kevin?
All right, I'll try to speak up the best I can. Last, October 23rd, we had a drug take back now at the transfer station. Ended up with 24.
Okay.
She's not muted.
He said 24,000?
For the state was 24,000. We had 24 pounds. It was a little off from last, the last fall. And, but I look back two years. And in perspective, it was about the same as what we usually get in the fall. We always get more in the spring. We got like 70 pounds last year in the spring. So I, I think it's, it's just sort of on a cycle. You know, you get more in the spring, less in the fall. And it's, that's just the way it is. Halloween, I had cruises down by Toot Hall and the post office for the kids. We also were at Comston Hall and I think it is about, we had about 800 pieces of candy and I was a little generous. So we did run out. Right, right at seven o'clock, I had a little come up. He got the last three pieces of candy. So that worked out well.
We had a little leftover. On purpose though, to save the good peanut butter cups.
And as most of you know, this is my last meeting. I'd like to thank you guys and past selectmen for giving me the opportunity. I appreciate it. And it was an experience. It was very, very good. I appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Well, maybe I should say now.
No, you can wait.
Dan, did you want to?
Yep.
Good evening. Just wanted to say, give a brief synopsis, first couple of weeks in. Gone very well working with the crew. They're, they know what they're doing. They do, do it a great job. They, they already were on the ground running with keep stepping down the form and it's just like clockwork and that's going very well. Updates on paving Pine Hill Road and Warren Road. Unfortunately, due to weather and contractor issues, that's going to be delayed till spring. We tried everything we could. The weather's just not going to cooperate temperature wise. They contractor was willing to do a shim coat, but not willing to do the hot top surfacing. We talked and figured that a shim coat would not last with files. So better just wait and get it done right in the spring. It's unfortunate, but it's just the way it's going to go. They are holding the price for us. It's guaranteed. So no issues there. And hopefully we'll get the early spring and get it done as soon as we can. Along the lines of delays, the new truck, the international truck is also delayed. And to this point till April. And that comes unfortunately right from, it's an international model we are going for. And that delay is directly from international. We hope to see it in the spring. April, so it won't be available for this plow season. Unfortunately, again, so that's just attributed to the, you know, worldwide delays and all supplies we're seeing across the board, unfortunately. And on salt and sand, sand and salt are all in. For those who are interested. We hold in 3,430 yards of sand. And that is our total for the winter. And it's as of this point, we called in 210 tons of salt. That will continue to go up as we go through the winter season. So that's where we stand. Any questions?
Now, Find Hill Road is pretty bad shape. Maybe with the delay in paving, you guys can go to take a look and see if there's any little extra work you can do on it to make the paving a little smoother and go a little better. You've got an opportunity several extra months to, to see what you might be able to do with it. That is one of the worst roads in town.
Certainly. And it was discussed that the delay being unfortunate, we, there was a few extra things that we can get done before the coat's down. So
That'll be good.
Be addressed again. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We had an election yesterday. It was not your typical off year November election. We had 41% turnout of voters in Monmouth. Pretty typical across the state, much higher turnout of voters than people expected. So that was great. 1,437 people totaled. That includes the absentee voters as well. Comparing, comparing this election to two years ago, pre COVID, we had 79 people vote absentee two years ago. And this year we had 436 people vote absentee. So I think the people have discovered that they like voting absentee and they're probably going to continue doing that going forward. Just to follow up on the last select board meeting where we were talking about leasing the solar array through a company. Tim was right. Because it's a long-term lease, it is going to require voter approval. So probably what you're going to want to do is one, decide if this is something that you want to do. Two, decide on the location and then put it out to vote for next June. But if it was a short-term lease, not a big deal, but this is a long-term. You have no idea when you might purchase it or if you'll purchase it and just keep leasing it. So it will require approval of the voters. And lastly, Justin is not able to be here this evening for his appointment. Please don't postpone the appointment though, because he can't be here. He has a select board meeting of his own and should be guiling. So that's all I have.
Did you find out, touch base with the ambulance service to see if they had any, lost any members?
No, I have not had a chance. We've been in election mode.
I know.
But I will, I will check with them.
Just because I'm curious.
Yeah. I will check with them.
And there was also a suggestion, I don't know, in the last week or two about looking into the potential for hiring an appraiser from the guy from Scalhegan.
Yeah, that's something that I think that you should probably have a conversation with Donna Hayes about. I believe she knows the person.
I did. I, I talked to Donna when she was here yesterday and she has no problem with, his name is Bill, Bill Van
Tynan.
Tynan, yes. She said he's, you know, put himself in that position where he's kind of a, become an expert on assessing power station, substations and she would not object at all if we, I don't know how much bill would cost, but you know, if whatever he would do, we, she would not, she wouldn't mind.
That may be worth exploring to find out at least, but the cost might be.
Yeah.
Next is a select board report. Yes.
Go ahead.
Oh, well, I just want to thank on our behalf for you and all you've done for the police department for 10 years. You've been probably among all the police chiefs that I, we've had in Monmouth and that I've known. You're right up there. You're the best. You, the people are very pleased. I think the general public are pleased with how you've done things and how you've handled situations and all that the department has done. With your guidance and all, it's been great, really. And we have a plaque for you, but because you got such we didn't get much notice. So the plaque is not here yet, but it will be here next week. And you'll still be around next week.
I will be.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yeah. And I, I know a little, you have a new job that you're starting right away. I've can you say a little about it, maybe?
I want to be a pipe insulator.
A pipe insulator.
Insulator. Construction company, yes.
This doesn't involve law enforcement.
Why are you smiling?
Well, we, we wish you the best, really. Does anybody else want to say something?
I just want to thank you for everything you've done and the department's been on the straight and narrow and really, I think, raised in the, the eyes of the public. And I think that, you know, we can definitely point to you for that wonderful improvement we've had. And we know we can always count on you for the, the gentle approach. And I think that's wonderful. That goes a long way. So thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you.
I hope whoever we hire for the new guy is as good as you.
Or girl.
Or girl. New guy, girl.
Well, yeah.
New person.
I was thinking of both.
I just say the same thing that, you know, you, you're, your leadership was definitely appreciated. And over the last last number of years with you leading the police department, Dan Rip leading the fire department, they've been pretty much controversy free. And that just is a sign of great leadership from both of you. And so, you know, as much as we hate to see you go, I, I think you know, you're making the right move and, you know, just wish you well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I just say something?
Yes.
As his supposed supervisor, I, I have to say, you know, when you're working with department heads or any other employees, you have to have a lot of respect for someone who comes into work every day, does the job, doesn't make waves and just gets it done. And anytime this board has asked me to reach out to Kevin and get anything done, he's been right on it. Anytime the public has called and needed anything from the police department, I've talked to Kevin and it's been done. He's just one of those department heads who is a real joy to have worked with in the last couple of years. I wish you well. I thank you for your support over the last two years and take care of yourself.
I'll have a couple of items for the selectman report. Neighbors helping neighbors does not know when or if they're going to have any community suppers this year. We've just been in the community, the Lions have been in communication with them very recently. And it doesn't look promising at this point, but they may start something after the first of the year. Regardless of that, the Lions will have our second annual turkey on the fly on November the 20th from noon to one in the Monmouth Fish and Game parking lot. It is a community supper. It's free to all Monmouth residents. Please call and pre-register. There will be advertisements in the community advertiser on social media and posters around town. There'll be two numbers for you to be able to call. And free register for your meal. We would prefer if everyone would pre-register. There'll be somewhere around 120 meals plus. Last year, I think we ended up doing 135. And the meals will be turkey, mashed potatoes, vegetables, cranberry sauce, gravy and pie for dessert. So I hope to see everyone there and have a good day on that. The other thing is last week I was asked about I brought up about municipal owned streetlights that bill was passed in 2014. And here's a copy of the, of the statute now that's based on that, which does authorize municipalities to own their own pole, own their own light fixtures on CMP poles. A nearby town, Wayne, has already done this and they are realizing they don't have as many streetlights as we do. But they're going to be realizing a cost of savings of somewhere around $5,200 a year just in, just in rental of those lights. I think it's something that's very well worth exploring for us. Cause it'll do a couple of things, of course. It will reduce the amount of electricity we use right up front. Always a good thing. And it will probably generate a larger savings than $5,000 a year to Monmouth residents and our budget. That's all I had.
Do you have a sense of what it costs upfront to, to purchase?
In
Maybe Wayne's case.
In Wayne's case, I, I think that they have maybe a third of the lights that we do. They had two proposals. One was for 15,000, one was for 23 or something. I can't remember exactly. They were very pleased with the contractor that they used because that same contractor also does the maintenance and bills on a, you know, repair fee, you know, case by case basis. The only way to figure out what we could actually get depends on a lot of things. If CMP has already replaced the lights with LEDs, then it becomes a straightforward process, I believe, to purchase them and hire a maintenance contract with a, with a company that does that sort of thing. And there's several out there that are very good at it apparently. If they have not changed them to LEDs, then the process would involve changing them all out to LEDs. And hiring the company to do the maintenance and there'd be a quite a bit higher upfront cost, but the payback is usually only a few years and the amount saved would be quite a lot. It would be forever.
If, if memory serves, I think current CMP bill regarding light fixtures was somewhere in the neighborhood of $10,000.
Between 10 and 13, I think.
Yeah. Yeah.
We just recently had CMP replace all the, our old lights.
They're all LED now.
And they're all LED. And so why did we choose that? I, I think I know that we chose to have CMP own the lights so that they would be made to take care of them if something goes wrong. So
I think that when we had that done, it was before this law went into effect. I don't think it was a couple of years ago. I think it was several years ago. Or maybe we didn't know the law was in effect or people weren't taking advantage of it. There's a big difference between paying, you know, maybe 11 cents a kilowatt hour and repairs as needed and, and versus 60 cents a kilowatt hour through, to maintain those light fixtures. It's a substantial savings.
Well, it sounds like we've got some time before we need to make a decision on exactly the scope of whatever solar solution we might want to have as the town, because it's going to require a vote and the next vote would be what, June? So, so in the meantime, it would be, this might be something we could explore to sort of understand exactly what the appropriate scale for the solar solution might be for the remaining part of our electric bill.
And it might actually cost us less. Since we don't have to replace the fixtures, we would probably just try to purchase them from CMP on whatever depreciation schedule they have. But that's, I don't know how that works. That would have to be explored with CMP and with an appropriate company.
It seems like a long time away until June, but you have to back that up to the warrant process. So now you're talking March and April, first of April would be, you'd want to have that decision made, but I can reach out and get the information on who to contact and who's doing what and find out. I know it's a, it's a substantial cost upfront, but the savings over time is also substantial. So I'll see what I can find out.
Sound manager and Wayne can help you.
Yeah, there's a few of them that have done this. It was an effort by several city and town managers around the state to allow municipalities to be able to buy their streetlights and own them themselves. And they had a tough time getting it passed, but they finally got it. And so it's worth looking into.
Okay. Anything else? Public comment?
That's right here. Cause I'd rather be watching this too. I just wanted to bring it to your attention, if you haven't seen it already on Facebook, that a couple of us got together and we will be having our third annual tree lighting. The, on Small Business Saturday. That's two days after Thanksgiving. The committee is the same as it's been. It's been Donna Seppi, Emily Dufour and Orba Apiez. This is, has been we started it out as a it's not a fundraiser. I don't know what it is. This, the museum is sponsoring it and had been sponsoring it with Emily because of Small Business Saturday. Unfortunately, we haven't been able to do much on Small Business Saturday this year. We'll do a little bit. But just wanted to tell you, this is really, it's coming together just great. The tree will be decorated by Dan here. It's going to be a challenge. This, but you enjoy this nice big tree because next year it might not be there. We're going to have to think of some alternative plans. We've already thought of it and worked some of the things out with the museum. Cause that tree is huge. And it's going to be a challenge for Dan, but he thinks he can, he thinks he can handle it. We've got something else exciting that's not finalized, but I think it might be in the works. We contacted the the music director at the high school. We're trying to get them to have a choir, their chorus and their music people to come and do something. So that's something new we're, we're going to do this year. We have, can't remember her last name, Julie Pullen, who is, works with Dennis. She's one of the improv people. She's going to be there once again and she will be, you know, do the lead up to the actual lighting, you know, of the tree. We're going to start the evening at the fire department and Dan has already volunteered to open the fire department and they'll have, you know, hot cocoa there. What else am I missing? Santa will be there.
Sparky.
Sparky.
Like Sparky, right?
Yeah. We'll hand out some candy canes. Does anybody have any questions? Because I, we're just doing so much. It's kind of hard to remember. Also Linda's going to be there and Justin will be there too, so that we're going to walk them around, you know, and introduce them to the crowd. It's, it's my feeling that even though Linda's leaving after a couple of years, some people don't even know who she is. So we're going to be, you know, introducing her too, besides introducing Justin. We do have somebody that will be photographing it. Do you want to tell them about that? Cause you worked with the
Yeah.
I don't know what he's called.
One of the challenges we had last year is that, you know, we didn't want to bring a lot of people together and we were struggling with recording and the audio and the visuals and from a distance, it doesn't, didn't really work as well. But we want to recognize that we have that same potential issue this year, right? Not knowing where things stand and how comfortable people are being out and about. And so we do have someone that's going to be doing some video recording. We have a space up above where they, they can see people caroling down the walkway as they come up. We can have a picture of the tree and we'll have audio in front. So we won't have to worry about the the wire issue that we were struggling with or whatever. So we have some audio. We'll be able to piece it together with the video. And then we'll do some collage of some photos. So we can actually put it out and it'll look a little more refined versus having a stream. Cause they tried to stream it last year and it just didn't work. So we do have someone that's going to do it and we'll have it up within an hour. So it'd be relatively quick for people. And so we'll start at 5:30. The fire department will open at 5:30. Then we'll come down probably around 10:00 to start the tree lighting at six and probably be done somewhere around 6:15. Last year we did a little later and it got too late. So we're sort of bringing that back a little bit to have it a little earlier in the evening. And hopefully that won't create too many challenges. But I think we're just trying to keep, you know, something going and it's really nice. You know, it's a nice way to start the, the season. I do have a question though. I mean, we've struggled with trying to figure out where small businesses are in the community to get an active list. Everyone has some sort of list and actually I'm pulling it from the comp plan and trying to pull it from a variety of other places. I'm just wondering, you know, is there a way that we have something in Monmouth that has current businesses that we could plug so that we try to create, I even called Jason to try to create a map of where people would be available, Small Business Friday, and people will be able to map it out, but it's going to struggle.
Donna, why don't you give Reagan a call tomorrow? She's in the office from nine to two, I believe.
I'm not sure who she is. I'm sorry.
Reagan is our economic development consultant.
Oh, okay.
And she has been reaching out to all the businesses in town. And so I believe she has compiled from various directions, a list of the businesses and she would be able to help you.
All right, that'll be good. Cause at least we'd like to be able to offer out to folks if they were interested an opportunity to share where they are and if they're going to be open. Cause so many people have businesses from home now or at least from different locations on the community. It'd be really nice that, that, you know, if they had something going and they wanted to be available. if they had something going and they wanted to be available, that we could highlight it for the town that day.
The time got away from us this year, so we got started a little bit late, but I was starting with Emily this morning. We're going to start around the Fourth of July to pull in this, you know, to meet preliminarily, to pull some of this small business stuff. Because we did something three years ago when we first started and I thought it was good. We did recognize a lot of those local businesses.
Yeah, that's the whole piece, right? The whole piece of Small Business Saturday to, to look at something from on that.
So I have some posters these and I have some smaller ones. If anybody wants one, if they know they have some place to put it, that's fine. Also just want to make it known, I'm not asking for anything, but this is totally unfunded. It's just, we, we are just, you know, we're doing it. You know, we've got people like Dan. We just have all these people volunteering to do things. So it, you know, it works out great.
I also have a digital photo of the poster if somebody wants it. Just ask my community now.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Andy. Uh, next is the request to ring bells on Veterans Day.
Did you want to see if anyone on Zoom wanted to speak?
Yeah. Is there anybody on Zoom who wants to talk?
It's not.
Okay. So the next thing is the request to ring bells on Veterans Day.
A state statute requires municipalities to reach out to those in the municipality who have bells to ask them to ring them at 11 o'clock on November 11th in recognition of veterans. Our fire chief has graciously agreed again this year to reach out to, I believe, the two churches in town that have bells. I understand the bell in the cupola at the old academy was rung today for a minute while they were up there checking it out. And it still works, but we won't be up there ringing the bell. But this is before you tonight to request that people ring the bells on Veterans Day.
So moved.
No second.
So it was a motion by Tim, a second by Chris to ring bells on Veterans Day. All those in favor? Thank you. Next is to appoint Justin Poirier as town manager, town clerk, treasurer, tax collector, road commissioner, health officer and general assistance administrator effective January 1st, 2022.
So as the select board knows, this process started, we advertised on August 30th with a deadline of September 30th for applications. We received 19, I believe, applications from some very well qualified managers from around the state and some people outside the state. The select board whittled that down to six people to interview. One of them dropped out. So five people were interviewed over a course of two nights on the 18th and 19th. And two were invited back for final interviews on the 25th. The select board has, is now recommending the appointment of Justin Poirier. Justin is currently the town administrator for the town of Shabique Island. He is an Augusta resident, so he is much closer to Monmouth than he is to Shabique Island with quite a commute every day. And this is before you this evening to appoint. I would just add one thing in having some conversations with staff. I'm going to be talking to Justin and I think you'll probably agree with this. We think that it might be a good idea. Don't do anything with it tonight, but down the road somewhere to appoint the public works director as the road commissioner and take that off of the town manager. It makes sense that all road projects, requests for road opening would go through the public works director and not through the town manager. But for this evening, all of the titles that Justin would be getting are about like.
So moved.
No.
Are, are you currently the road commissioner?
Um, yes, I am, which really makes no sense.
Curtis was always the road commissioner also.
But before him, apparently Herb was the road commissioner.
So.
And I'll second.
Okay. Tim made a motion and Chris seconded it to appoint Justin Poirier to all those positions effective January 1st, 2020, 2022. All in favor? Thank you. Uh, next is to authorize the use of TIF streetscape funds for Maple Street sidewalk project.
Thank you. So as you know, the, when we did the bids for this project that was approved by the voters a couple of Junes ago to do Maple, North Main and Beach sidewalks, we had some slowing down of the project on Maple Street because the Department of Transportation was concerned about the catch basins. And at the time they were requesting that we replace the catch basins, which we knew was going to be a lot of expense that we weren't going to be able to afford because it was a certain amount approved by the voters for us to borrow. And so we delayed putting that out to bid and only did Beach and North Main. Both of those projects are done. And in working with Rob Prue, who's the engineer on this project, it was his recommendation that the current contractor, that we do a change order and award the sidewalks to Maple. Now that we've worked everything out with the Department of Transportation so that we can get the same prices from him, because if we go out to bid now, everything's gone up and it would cost us a lot more. However, the project on Beach cost us more than we had expected it was going to because of the replacement of the bridge area. And so the project itself, just the paving, the sidewalk project itself is about 45 over what we had anticipated. And in addition to that, we've gotten the cost for removing trees. They have the lowest price that we've gotten for that is about 15,000. So we're looking at about $60,000 more than we had borrowed. And we can take it out of the TIF funds on the streetscape line because the voters have given you permission last June to use TIF funds for their intended purposes, according to the TIF documents. I do not have that authority, but you do. And so I'm asking for authority to use the streetscape line and the TIF funds to pay for the overage.
Can you tell us what, what happened with the issue of the the, the issue of the catch basins with DOT on Maple Street? Did they?
Somehow they worked it out. There's been so many discussions back and forth about it. There was a, a portion of the sidewalk that they were worried was going to wash out. They have taken on a lot of this project and they're going to be taking it on themselves and not requiring us to do it. So we're not paying for the catch basins. There may be a time when they come back in. There's one catch basin that's going to be under sidewalk and it may eventually, it definitely is going to need to be replaced, but they're going to come in and do it. They said that they will have to rip through the sidewalk, but they will replace the sidewalk back to where it was before they ripped it out. We have developed a really good working relationship with the Department of Transportation. So it's, it's nice to have that working relationship. And I've mentioned to you a couple of times in the past about the downtown sidewalks. They're interested in working with us on that and possibly even funding part of that project, which would be great.
Where's the bridge? When's, when's the bridge coming for Beach Road?
The piece that they're putting across, they haven't put it across yet. Oh, I didn't, I wasn't aware that that wasn't done. I'll check on it.
I was under the impression it was supposed to be here in October.
And if the weather cooperates, we should be able to get the Maple Street sidewalks done before the end of the year. That's what we're hoping, but I'll check on that. I know North Main sidewalks are done and they came out really nice.
So because Tim and I both mentioned this last week, or two weeks ago about replanting as, as part of those TIF funds, could we look at future, you know, could streetscapes funds for replanting some of the, I think there's seven trees I counted Xs on being replaced.
Anything that's a permanent beautification of the TIF area? You could use them for, if it goes outside that TIF area, I'm not positive about that. I know that in the TIF district you could.
Depends on the language in the TIF document. If it says townwide, it's different than TIF district. If it says townwide, you're covered for it because Maple Street's not in the TIF district.
Yes.
So you have to look at what the language says.
Do sidewalks using the TIF fund townwide, but I'm not sure about permanent beautification.
We can check.
Reagan is actually working on a policy for dealing with the use of TIF funds because it really isn't a policy in place for when people come forward and request. So she can look at that as well. But I did have someone approach me in the polling place yesterday and she said, when are we doing the sidewalks on Maple Street? And please take my tree down. So.
There's a lot of old maples there, but still, there are a lot of old maples.
Someone asked me today when the work would be done, the trees would be taken down and if there would be replacements.
So maybe we can investigate that.
We'll look into that.
With.
Well, even if the TIF fund doesn't fund replacements because it doesn't say townwide, I see no reason whatsoever that we can't put a few thousand dollars in on a warrant article to put some trees in over there. I really don't believe people would not want to have trees, especially maple trees on Maple Street.
I, I, I thought that the TIF district went all the way from the substation you know, up to well, to the post office and then went up Main Street to 202. But that's not true.
No.
No.
No, the substation's nowhere near. That was just the.
The substation is in the TIF district and originally there was one of the original proposals because at the time it was thought that we had to have a continuous TIF district. So it went up certain roads. One of them was Maple Street to hit Main Street to go down Main Street. When we found out that wasn't the case, that we didn't have to have the test district be a contiguous, a continuous district, we removed certain portions of it to reduce the amount of acreage we had in the TIF and be able to support future expansion. You don't want, because you're only allowed a certain percentage of your town acreage in a TIF district. Okay, so we need a motion.
I'll make a motion authorizing the use of TIF streetscape funds for Maple Street sidewalk project.
Second. So Chris made a motion and give it to Harold. You can give it to Harold. Streetscape funds for the Maple Street sidewalk project. All those in favor?
Well, I will abstain because I was the primary driver of the TIF.
Next is a work session and the first is a discussion regarding Woodbury Pond Dam.
Good evening. I'm Kelly Weisnerfels. I'm a town manager of Litchfield. With me is a member of our select board, Reyna Lee Witz. And Dan, great, Chair Mark Evans. We want to discuss this since there's a shared lake space on the Tacoma Lakes, shared border with Monmouth and, and with Litchfield. In May, we observed that the dam at Woodbury, Woodbury Pond Dam had a small leak. The dam's located, it's just north of the boat launch, what we call Whittier Road. You've noticed Town Farm probably. So we observed that and we engaged Wright Pierce, an engineering firm, to evaluate it for us. They suggested as part of the phase one document that we put sandbags and possibly have a grout injection. And evaluating that and what the, the cost of the grout injection and the length of time between that and a more permanent solution. And decided that just using a sandbag should be sufficient. We got a permit and placed those sandbags on the 25th of October, just last week. So in the process, we have determined that yes, there, the leak had increased and there were some voids found when they did some tests for bedrock in the, in the berm on the east side of the dam. So what we're really requesting is moving forward. Right now, we're, we're very grateful for a $500 a year contribution from Monmouth toward dam maintenance. We have recently increased Litchfield's share of that to $4,000 a year. We have estimated, rough estimate right now with the Tacoma Lakes Association. I have about 500 members and about 100 of those are Monmouth residents. So we're kind of estimating a possible cost share of about 20%. We expect to hear final engineering or a phase two engineering by the end of this month with cost estimates. So that's basically what I've got right now. I know Mark has been very, very active about engaging with the state to do some historical research and also to investigate the possibility of getting, using the dam bond bank to raise some funds that way. So we're going to be, as soon as we get the final engineering, we're going to proceed.
A few things if it's all right.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I want to mention that we have Kate Goodspeed from Monmouth on the Zoom. She's here from Southern Mexico where she's residing right now to join the meeting and add any information that you need. And she's our representative on the, on that particular committee. A couple of things worth knowing. One of them is, is the original cost estimate to just shore up the dam to keep it from heading toward failure was about $150,000. And part of that was going to be including putting pressure grounding into the earthen berm next to the concrete dam to shore that up. And as Kelly mentioned, when they did that, they found out that the earthen berm was not in really great shape. Ultimately, there were some reasons that, that made it impractical to try to put grounding. However, the sandbags, these really large industrial sandbags that go all the way down to bedrock have really been very effective so far. They bought us a time to work on the rest of the project. And the cost of that's been a lot less than $150,000. And all of that cost so far has been borne from the taxpayers with your contributions from Monmouth. And of course, the funds that have been raised through Litchfield, through Special War offer. So it's been, that is fully paid for. The phase one part of this. What happens now is that an engineering plan for what would actually fix the dam on a permanent basis has to be finalized. They're looking at like rolled steel. That seems to be the most practical way to go. And the cost of that is going to depend on the price of steel. And it's going to depend on the other costs that we have not yet seen. But I can add that the engineers anticipate the best time to actually affect that repair will be about a year from now because we want to have the water level down for the, for the dam that serves the Tacoma Lakes, including Monmouth residents. So currently the winter rate, how high the water is, the low it is, is about six feet. It's going to stay that way until spring. We can bring it up somewhat for voters and other users of the Tacoma Lakes to about seven feet until the repairs are ready. But the big part for us is that we have to be prepared to work collectively as two towns serving people with five lakes to serve one dam. So that we're prepared as we go through the winter to know what will it cost? Do we have the Army Corps of Engineers and do we have Department of Environmental Protection permits? Do we agree on cost sharing so that we can appropriate money? How much of that money can we borrow from the state repair reconstruction fund, the dam bank? And what that allows us to do is to take money from, from that fund and spend five years at no interest paying it back. So that slows everything down for both towns. All of those things will be pending and we'll continue to make steps in that direction. And the goal would be to affect whatever repairs there are by October of 2022. So that's all I wanted to add if it's all right.
Yes. Thank you.
Do you want to let Kate speak?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, I've taken a tour of my side of the lake, my side of San Pond, which is where the Monmouth residents live and there's a lot, a lot of high quality, high expense real estate there. So I, I don't know what the tax results are there, but just looking at, at Chipmunk, Scott, Chipmunk and Grant. There are some huge houses and a lot of, a lot of tax money coming in. So I would like to speak in favor of, of working with the town of Litchfield and, and bearing 20%, which I think is generous and appropriate going forward. And I understand that at some point in time, and I don't know what the timing is, we would need to put in a, a request for that to be in the budget. But I would, I would, I would assume that the new town manager and the town manager of Litchfield, Kelly could, could work that out.
Yes. So I, I read the material that
So I read the material that was included, that you included with a packet. And if I'm understanding it correctly, the, the ballpark estimate to, to do the permanent repairs should fall somewhere between 300 and $500,000. Is that, was that an accurate reading of?
That was, that was their first estimate. And we're not sure, they're going to come up with a more accurate, hopefully estimate by the end of the month.
But I'm taking it again because everything increases in cost that, you know, we, we thought about that more near that 500,000 dollar range that, that 20% of that would be $100,000. And personally, I, I, of course, the voters would have to approve that. But I, I personally would be in favor of, of putting an item like that on the warrant. We obviously, we have to discuss it and so forth. But per, from, from my point of view, that's a, an important piece of of water, a potent body of water, not just for the property owners and the taxes, but it's a, it's a great pond. And it services everyone in the state and everyone that visits the state. So it's not just the property tax. It's all the money that's generated from all the people that come in in the summertime. And they spend money in the area businesses. And so the, the economic impact from those bodies of water reaches far beyond just the property tax generated to the towns which the property resides. So I just think if we, you know, as a, as a group of people in the two towns, take a bit of a wider look at, at the value of those bodies of water to all of us that that will come down on the side of doing what's necessary to make a long-term repair.
Did I understand you correctly that if the hypothetical $500,000 is the magic number where we arrive? And if hypothetically Monmouth's portion of that would be $100,000, that the, the dam bank would, the state would allow us to borrow the money over a five-year period interest free, interest free?
Can I build that? Let's speak up so it goes through the speaker because Kate's on the other end of this. The situation here is that the bond bank functions by loaning money out to other dams that are under reconstruction. There's about 6,300 of these projects possible in the state of Maine at any given time. And there are approximately 400 of them that are low risk dams, just like ours. So how much money they have depends on two things, how much they loaned out and how fast it's being paid back. So the timing is everything. So we're in touch with the administrator at MEMA in Augusta where the staff works with the state dam inspector. And we're watching to see how money comes in and out. And that's all information we of course can access. And the goal is to make our timing such that we borrow when there's the most amount to borrow. And if we think that there's going to be a repayment on some of these projects that are accelerated in other areas because they finish their construction typically before winter comes. We're looking at probably mid-winters being the most favorable time to approach them. And of course, it seems to me that both towns will want to consider how we apportion the proceeds from that packet and repayment so that both towns benefit from the ability to spread that out for five years. So we're, our interest in making sure we, that we find the time is, we get the maximum amount available of this really great asset to reduce the immediate upfront cost for both towns.
Sure. And I, I think Ken, that if, if I'm accurate, if I understand it properly, that the, the loan would go to the entity that's repairing, actually doing the repair, and then we'd just be contributing to the repayment of that loan on a schedule. So that's, that's how that would work, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. So we wouldn't be borrowing the money.
Yeah.
We'd be just helping pay back what, what was borrowed by the entities. So but on a schedule of five years, $100,000, $20,000.
It might be $20,000.
Yeah. Now, I think that's, given the economic impact of, you know, all the things that Harold just said quite eloquently.
Given the economic impact of recreation on lakes, this is an important part of our economy and, and the town's obligation to, you know, maintain vibrant lakes. So I, I would certainly express my willingness to, to, to support something on the order of what we've discussed tonight in terms of potentially $100,000, potentially over five years. And if that expression of support gives the town of Litchfield the confidence to approach the bond bank to, you know, at the right time. And please let us know what we can do to, you know, satisfy whatever they're required to, you know, earmark whatever might be available going forward.
Mark, if I might mention, at one of our meetings, we talked a little bit about putting, putting out for bids and having some way of fixing it, the price so that we, we aren't taken off course by the price of steel rising so quickly. Was there something about that, that if we could, if we could lock down a, a price where, when, when the price of steel is reasonable, it would, it would hold us maybe to the lower number?
Yeah, this is Kelly. Yeah, definitely. We will look into an option like that if we can try to set a pre-order or a prepayment plan that would allow us to lock a price in. That makes a good sense.
But in the past, when Compass Lake rebuilt their dam, we shared the cost with Winthrop and Manchester and I think maybe Litchfield.
West Gardner.
West Gardner, perhaps. I'm not sure. Anyway, so this is something we do just because of the value of our lakes. And when we have currently two dams for Anabaskook and Costa Wagon that need something. So yeah, we're, it's certainly something that we need to do. Definitely.
So they should keep in touch with me and then Justin, as Justin comes on board, I'll put a note in the file as we're preparing the warrant in the budget. That this is possibly going to be an article on that warrant.
Oh, we certainly appreciate it.
So it would be great if we could have a solid number to by mid-March.
Absolutely. We'll, we'll be looking for that same number to be able to approach the bond.
Right. Because you're going to do the same thing. You're going to put your warrant out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next work session is with the Greater Augusta Water District Representative.
Yeah. I'd like to introduce Brian Tarbuck, the superintendent for, it's actually Greater Augusta Utility District, which is still an industrial district in 109. They're here because Monmouth Sanitary District is a member of the inter-community trunk line group. Monmouth F going is pumping, goes into the Winthrop, over at the Winthrop, what we call a trunk line station three, and then it's pumped into Augusta. We're a satellite collector system. We're facing within the next 10 years, the situation that could become very costly. But it also, we have an opportunity at this time because I think that the ARPA fund. I want to turn it over to Brian Tarbuck. One, I don't know what happened to my voice in the last few weeks. Seem to be losing it. But Brian can explain to you in some, not in infinite detail, but what we're facing for costs. Just keep in mind that the sewer systems between the trunk line system is Monmouth, Winthrop and Manchester and a small part of Augusta. Between those communities, over a billion gallons of sewage F will be going into our lakes. So it is, again, we just heard about how important the lakes are with Litchfield. These would have a direct impact upon Anabaskook and Compassy. So without any ado, Brian.
Hey there. How are you? I got a middle school guy at home, hence the mass name. But I'm going to hand out, if I may, a couple of little pieces of paper here to help explain what the, what the trunk line is a little more visually. I'd like to thank Kent for bringing this up. There's two there. Saw me a couple of weeks ago and kind of priming the pump, if you don't mind the pun, to have this conversation. They get worse. They get a lot worse. I've been at it since a little after five this morning. And then the second, and actually I can just hand it, is it okay? What if I hand that to you and you just grab one and pass it along? Now I've handed out, I don't remember what it all says. I'm also weary of standing on this X because I don't know if there's like an embolism. Dr. Evil, just down you go.
strategically placed between the speakers.
Where you get beamed up.
So I think I'll first go over this, this document, the visio document here. We do hit, we, for, I don't know, 51 years now, we've been taking wastewater from Monmouth, Winthrop, Manchester. And now the Greater Augusta Utility has merged with the Hollowell Sewer piece is Hollowell Water District has always been there. But they merged with us back in 2007, created the Greater Augusta Utility District. So we own all that infrastructure from Winthrop all the way to Augusta. And that takes all the wastewater from, all the way from Compton Hall, all the way down to the Kennebec River. So 51 years ago, people, brighter than I was, I wasn't even born then, decided that this was a good idea. We didn't want sewer going to lake. So now a lot of these systems are getting old and we have to repair them, replace them. And we're looking at combining two different pump stations into a single pump station to save some long-term costs. Specifically, it reduces the height that we have to lift the water up every day. So every day we have to pump this water and I think we can use an old pathway that they used up until 1980, repurpose that. And, and now save some money. But as you'll see on your sheets there, we're looking for something on the order of $12 million out of $23 million that ARPA has. And they kind of laughed at us when we, we dropped that off. But we have these two sewer pump stations that regardless of what we do, they're going to need about $9 million worth of work over the next 10 years. So we believe that this is a strong application. We, like you, probably don't really know exactly what the criteria are for the application and how those awards are going to be made. So we've submitted it the best we can to explain that communities in Winthrop, Monmouth and Manchester are generally ineligible for the funding that we're likely to get if Congress ever produces an infrastructure bill. So we know that if that money does come to Maine, it'll follow the same pathways that we've applied for money in the past. And Monmouth is inevitably ineligible, I think, because you have lakefront property that Augusta doesn't have. We have riverfront property and the river isn't worth quite as much yet. We're working on it. We're trying to make it cleaner. So what that means is that this is kind of the only grant opportunity we have for Monmouth, Manchester and Winthrop to try to get this project done. So we wanted to make you folks aware of it. Wanted to make you kind of think about where does the wastewater go? Because it just goes somewhere. That's great. But it goes all the way to Augusta in a lot of cases. And who in town is helping to pay for that wastewater when it goes? As I understand, a very small subset of the folks in Monmouth actually pay the rates. So as a result, any small cost that they have is ignorantly borne by a small number of people. And then of course, the, the concern is that the one industry that this whole thing was helped, helped to build the trunk line in the first place, along with Carlton Woolhamill, which has since gone out of business. What's a long-term future of that? And if that should go away, what's the impact on the customers here in Monmouth? So there's a lot to think about, but I'm going to stop talking because you said I could do it in almost infinite detail. I'll, I'll go for days. Ken knows.
And I might just fill into some kind of what we've done. We presented to all the towns on the trunk line. And in the case of, most of the towns, they pledged some of the, most of their upper money towards this if, if this goes. We don't know what the criteria is. If you read the national, nationally, what the money's for, we, this, this project meets that. But we got to wait till the county actually does that and there's going to be, and I'm sure there's, there's pressure and competition for it. But this really serves a majority of citizens in Kennebec County, but that's the interesting part about it. You really get a lot of bang for the buck for this money. I understand that, that we're asking for a lot of it, but it's a big deal. And I think Brian explained it because, you know, with quality, with only so many people that can pay for this. And whether or not we get this, this project is going to be done in the next 10 years. That's, that's, that's the reality of that. And I would also say the reality is, let's just say they give us some of that money. We would, we would pull the trigger and do that project because some money's better than none because basically there's none out there to get. Back in the seventies and when they, when they first gave money out to do these, that's all gone. And again, we don't know what's ever coming down. And if it's big, when it comes, these towns out here don't do well with that. So we're trying everything we can do to save rate payers and taxpayers' money. And this is one of them. We thought we ought to know about it and, and we, we with Paul every month. So we're all on the same page here, but, but guys, I don't know. Any questions or anything?
Well, I will tell you that I did have several discussions with Mr. Devlin. I haven't had any discussions with his replacement, his, the gentleman has taken the job. But I did talk a little bit with the commissioners. And I did mention a sewer project might be the way to go because our line is getting older. And just to put Carlton Woolen into context, I was the facilities engineer there for many years. I was responsible for the water coming in and water leaving. They put a million gallons a day of water down that pipeline and paid for, I think, about 60% of the cost. And that's what happens when you lose industry in, in central Maine. And that, all that rate and all that cost has to now be borne by, by taxpayers, you know, and, and rate payers. So it's, it's difficult to, to work with that when it happens, but that's the way it goes. And I am all for trying to do what we can to support this effort. And I think in the past, the board has written letters and signed them and endorsed them, encouraging certain things. I think this is one of those times when a letter detailing our commitment and our support of this kind of project, project to the county commissioners would, would carry some weight and be well worth it.
So as one of the two that are on the sewer line, you're not, so the one person that's on, it doesn't, it stops at the school? Oh, well, so, you know, I used to pay $90 a quarter. Now I pay $145 a quarter. And knowing when we lost Globe Albany, that's when things went to hell in a handbasket for the folks like me who, I have my own well and I don't have town water. So there's no metering. My mother is a single person living in a house on a well. There's no metering. So you have no gauge as opposed to a family of 10 flushing the toilet and running the water and a, a single person. There's no way to meter that and what her usage is. So she pays the same as everybody else. So that's always been a huge concern of ours and somebody that's 80 before paying for that. And I was there when they built that sewer line. I watched it go in because the pump station is within sight of my house. And when the power goes out, I know the power goes out because the generator comes on and I can hear it all night long running when the power goes out. So knowing that when we did have a, a backup and it all came into our cellar when I was a child, what the sewer lines can have happen, I know it's important to make sure we do this, but making sure that we reduce those numbers to the, to the very few people in Monmouth that are on the sewer line because it is very few compared to.
Monmouth has about 600 billable accounts and only 444 connections. More accounts because as you apartment or multifamily units, each unit in there is a billable account. Size, text tech, when we go to Albany, when it began, they used to pay about 50, 55%. Cost here in Monmouth, you're now paying 8%.
Exactly. And, you know, I know that constantly then there's issues with our pipes in town because of the age and there's breaks and I've called some in myself when I've driven by and seen it coming out into the road. So, um, you know, knowing that we have a way. you know, knowing that we have a way to ask for funds and, and um, hopefully get some, but um, there's got to be some sort of end in sight to that number. So you know, whether or not, you know, the reason I didn't have to be on, but no profit, no piece of my property would pass the perk test. So I had to get on and put in an effluent pump, so those um, you know, whether people can disconnect and get off, if they can't afford it. I mean, building septic sewer fields are not something people do anymore, but you know, there's.
There again, they can only get off. If they're within two hundred feet of the sewer line, it's state law that it's mandated, it must.
And I'm not.
I won't say unique situation.
I am unique. But I, I think that, you know, looking at the, the dollar amounts that the, that the sanitary district, you know, and a way to figure out how, how we can, can change this. Um, when, when pipes break in town, um, and Jimmy Hopkins is called to dig up the road, is that paid for by GAD or is it paid for by Monmouths? That's, so those were my questions. I wanted to know how this all gets parceled out.
If, if I may.
It's.
Our budget, our budget, what you're talking about, yes, we had an unfortunate number of years where we had five breaks.
Yeah.
Um, I think that was attributable to poor construction or poor materials in that three quarters of a mile from the pump station up to about the railroad tracks, knock a wood.
In my dooryard, watching it run out in the morning.
I pray that there aren't any more.
I do too.
But that's all on the local with district. All right. Now, our budget is comprised of what we have for local expenses, our own operations. We operate three pump stations plus the collectors' maintenance and the force main. In addition to that, we own the operation, we pay about twenty-five percent of the operation for the interim community truck line. That's basically pipe flow, and we pay roughly about twenty-three percent of capital cost. The last few years, the trunk line group has replaced what we call a trunk line three, that's the pump station down there at uh, between Winthrop and the mill stream there.
Yes.
Uh, we've had to, an emergency replacement two years ago on uh, going up to, to the hill, going up through the pump station because that, that pipe began the spring leaks.
Yeah.
And ten years ago, eleven years ago, we, we placed the uh, what we call a trunk line one, which was a pump station to the east side of the turnpike down in a wet area. We made that gravity by going through, is it American Legion or pump, or yeah, American Legion thing down by uh, those staples and that. That first bond issue, which was twenty-ten, is gonna be paid off in eight years, nine years. Right behind that is gonna be, if we don't get these funds, it's gonna be a bond issue to replace what we call trunk line two, which is a little pump station or the building down there by Coyote Tractor in Manchester. Additionally, there's trunk line four, which is gonna have to be replaced. Now, Brian, I don't know, did you hand out these?
No, I didn't have a, I didn't have enough copies. I have another couple though.
Yeah, these are brought, something that Brian put together, giving, if you have enough there. Some rough estimates what it's gonna cost, where he's coming up with this twelve million dollar estimate. The cost of these bond issues. If we don't get these ARPA funds, I would expect a percentage of these in eight years. Right now, yes, Krista, we, we went to a hundred and forty-five after the text. The last few years, the sanitary district has been struggling, and at one time, we were thought we might have to go to two hundred and ten a quarter.
Yes.
Fortunately, because our flows have dropped off, we've been able to hold, had discussions with Brian on this, because when we get the budget in January and that, we've been able to hold our rates at a hundred and forty-five, but they're probably gonna have to go up maybe not fifty, sixty dollars a quarter, maybe ten dollars a quarter. And believe me, I know, because I speak to your mother.
And she writes a note every quarter on her bill.
We, I won't say we look forward to it.
Our mother's still at our rate.
And I empathize with her. It, it hurts when, when we're paying that much for sewer. But if we don't get these ARPA funds, it's gonna hit drastically on those few users in this town.
So Paul, am, am I understanding uh, what you're saying is that uh, the, the trunk line portion of the sanitary, Monmouth sanitary district's budget has the potential for substantial increase in, in the near future? If these ARPA funds from the county don't come through to uh, to offset the future replacement of the aging pipes and in these sections of the trunk.
That's correct, and, and, you, you're absolutely correct, Ken. In twenty nineteen, when we had to take that emergency bond issue, it was in twenty seventeen, we took a bond issue, I think, for one point five or it was one point six million to replace what we call a trunk line three, new pumps and wet wells and stuff like that. Shortly after that, in twenty nineteen, the force main and the pipe going up the hill began the spring leaks. And if you remember last winter, they were out there repairing in that. That was one point, was, was one point eight million dollars there. That one bond issue will increase Monmouth's budget by thirty-four, thirty, yeah, thirty, it was decreasing. Of course, it started out at about thirty-three, thirty-four thousand a year. That's where we were toying with having to go playing around, do we have to raise our rates to that so much?
Right.
So now twenty, like you say, in eight years, the twenty-twenty, twenty-ten bond issue drops off, but there's gonna be another one to replace, say, just look at trunk line two, there could be another four million dollars. Look at that, so you know, because we have such a limited base, a limited, you know, citizens in this town that are paying for it, um, it's gonna be very expensive.
And just uh, for your information, Chris, I'm on the sewer also.
Yeah.
And I don't give them a lot of product, but I still pay the same amount. But Tex Tech is another example of the loss of industrialization in the middle of Maine. They originally did all the tennis ball over there when it was a huge percentage of the tennis ball that was produced in the world. And that's why they use so much water. That particular process is water intensive. Now they mostly do ballistics, which is not water intensive. And because most of the tennis ball went over to Southeast Asia because the manufacturers didn't want to pay the shipping costs. And so subsequently, the water uses by Tex Tech went down, I don't know, eighty percent, eighty-five percent a lot. So that caused that issue, which Carlton Woolen started to exacerbate when they went out in two thousand.
On this uh, on the sheet you just gave us, Paul?
Yeah.
It says Caddyshack.
Oh, yeah, that's.
I need danger feeling.
Yeah. So I, I can explain that. So I, I needed a way to distinguish the different pump station options. So we have a trunk line two, which is kind of a small pump station, trunk line, I'm sorry, trunk line two is a big one, trunk line four is a small one. We want to combine those both in the same spot, which is actually adjacent to the golf course. So I'm thinking, how is a golf course gonna be too keen on letting us build a sewer pump station next to like hole eight or whatever it is? And I'm thinking they're not gonna be, so I'm like, well, maybe if we made a pump station such that it had like a Coca-Cola dispenser or something on it and a couple restrooms, that would be like, and I love the movie Caddyshack, so I'm just calling it the cat, because I didn't know what else to call it, I was in a hurry. And then as he was handing it out, I was like, I don't know if I should be handing all those out to you guys, but. So anyway, that's, that's the idea, to try to have a, a multiple use sort of thing, to try to get more people to think that this is not such a bad idea. And uh, you know, the idea that we can consolidate them back to where it started in nineteen seventy makes a lot of sense. But it's not a, it's not a done deal. I mean, this is a moonshot. This is like, was it nineteen thirty-two Babe Ruth pointing at the fence and hitting the dinger on the World Series? I mean, this is a big, big attempt we're trying to take. And we, we don't diminish that other folks in the county need money desperately for other projects. We, we just heard about the dam. There's, there's loads of stuff out there. You guys have another couple dams, I'm sure, you know? It's, it's hard. And so there's a lot of stuff, but we just don't know. We don't know when we're ever gonna have another chance at this, to try to get grant money for these communities that are otherwise ineligible for the systems that exist today. So that's, that was the impetus to.
To sum it up then, our request tonight is for the town manager to draft a letter of support to support God's application for the ARPA. That's all we're asking for.
For sure. I'm one hundred percent behind that.
If you didn't, I would add, I would add one more thing to this, that, you know, Greater Augusta Utility District, you know, we do, we, we don't, we don't, you guys are separate and all that. But you know, we're also here to talk to people. In the future, if things get, whether finances go, you know, we can, we can help other districts around, you know? We don't, we're not looking to be a regional and hold every, have every district. You know, we work within the local agreements and things like that. So we're a resource. If Paul ever needs something more or whatever resources you need to run the Monmouths, you know, we already do a lot of things. You know, we, we already have billing, we already have this, if we can ever be of help, to help keep your costs, please talk to us. I mean, we will work through Paul and, and all that, but there's, there's some options there that you have in the future if that is ever needed. But we certainly don't, don't, don't push that kind of thing. But I do think in these times, with money being tight, and, and I understand the pressure that Paul's out here, just trying to do, do what he does and, and keep it. It's, it, there is some things to talk about, not saying they're all, I, I don't have the best answer, but we are here to help if need be. We have a, we have a big, we have forty-two, forty-six employees. And we can help.
I have a question for you. Uh, for those Monmouth residents who are on metered water, do they pay uh, the standard rate or do they, are they paying on a meter?
It's all, the only one we bill on by a metered rate is Tex Tech.
Okay.
A percent. I would dearly love to have everybody a metered water if we could. But the Monmouth Water Association users are about a third of our billable units. They only have two hundred and twenty-five people on water, but we have six hundred, I guess, six hundred billable units. So until we can get a uniform across it. Now, we also have, over the last couple of years, we've had hired or consulted with Main World Water Association, had done an in-depth rate study. One of the options being what would the base rate fee or what would the user fee be? Yes, Krista, we are equipped with that. We're, we're not sitting there in a vacuum or just totally ignoring it.
How can I irritate Jesse Moore, right? You're not doing that. That's my job.
But yes, Kent, to answer your question, because we lack district-wide water utility, where we have the water meters, and we have to bill on a flat rate per unit.
Okay.
So a letter?
A letter.
Please.
Need a motion for that or?
Nope, nope.
You can do that by consensus.
Uh, this, has the county given you an idea of uh, uh, other potential proposals for the?
County does not have its uh, I gotta watch what I say. We got a letter, we got an email back that is not cool, and, and I will, I will talk to these people about that. But, but I think that uh, there's a, we, we had, we had a planning session last week and, and a bunch of truck line was there. And we had state representatives, the state senators there, and there's, I will tell you, all of the locally elected representatives are really looking, they're, they're, they're gonna be involved. And I think they're gonna hold the county to have some form of criteria, and follow the federal standards that the money's, the money has been sent to the state and to the county. There's some rules for that, and, and I think there's gonna be enough people holding them up. If they do that, then this project has some, has some legs. Because we didn't do this just because, we did it because money funds had some certain criteria. Now we need to get the county to hold to that criteria.
Sure.
They won't, we can't get that answer. Well, I think we will, but today it isn't.
One, one political aspect to this to cut my eye is that the group of towns that are involved in this collaborative process uh, cross uh, into two out of three of the commissioners' districts.
Pretty serious. One with uh, I mean, Manchester's uh, uh, promised their whole two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars to put into this project. I mean, that's how serious that this, this is, and also not every town can do that, obviously, but, but that's, that's how serious this, this group is taking it. So I think their elected officials hear that, and I, I think they'll hold some people accountable to county, I, I hope. And I think there's a new manager, and I think that'll help as well, too. Not, not that, what, we're just, not for some changes and.
The, the commissioner that I spoke with, um, and we're on the record, so I won't put it on the spot, but the commissioner that I spoke with was um, uh, sounded very eager to hear our proposal.
Good. Pause it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, if I may, a personal matter, going back to Maple Street.
Yes.
Before you start considering planting trees and that, come to, come speak to residents.
Well, exactly, exactly. But I think there's some key spots, like I think, but properties you own, there's.
Well, I've tried over the years, forty years that I've lived there, and some of the trees are beginning to mature. But yeah, I know one of my big maple trees is coming.
Yeah.
And I, and I told Rock Fruit, take it down.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, yeah, and some of them are older and they, they're definitely, yeah, having issues, but I think.
But yeah, but please come to us.
Thank you.
Call to us.
Yeah. Thank you.
Did you, Paul, did you want to change it to Oak Street?
There was actually a tree study done about five or six years ago that identified all the trees, all the major trees on Main Street, Blue Road, Maple Street, in the both cemeteries and a couple of other roads, Academy Road. And they were identified as to health, size, and vigor. Some of the trees were removed as a result of that study, and some still need to be removed, so that should be checked into. And some of those trees that need to be removed are not necessarily on Maple Street.
War on number nine, Mr. Chairman?
Sorry, that is Justin's call track down there, so I could get that back.
Next is uh, war number nine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
War number nine, allied equipment, cloud break, blaze, four thousand four hundred and thirty-four dollars. This is for public works. Anders Skogden Bank, public works, truck lease, seventeen thousand three hundred and ten dollars, seventy-four cents. Two rock earthworks, solid waste trips and sand trucking, four thousand six hundred and fifty-five dollars. Central Main Power for electricity, three thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars, six cents. Colette Monuments for stone restoration, this is the cemetery, two thousand five hundred dollars. Dennis K. Burke uh, for gasoline, one thousand two hundred and four dollars, eighteen cents. Everett Prescott for culverts, one thousand twenty-nine dollars. Fleet Truck and Refrigeration for repairs and inspection of two thousand six International, one thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars, ninety-eight cents. TDI Service, our janitorial service, thousand one hundred and forty dollars. Grummel Industries for bulk waste demolition, three thousand four hundred and sixty-six dollars, seventy-two cents. High-tech fire protection for sprinkler system, Compton Hall, one thousand six hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Lance's Auto and Truck Repair for our service on the two thousand nine Navistar, one thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars, sixty-eight cents. Main Waste Energy for solid waste recycling, two thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars, twenty-nine cents. New England Salt Company for salt, three thousand six hundred dollars, fifty cents. Regional School Unit Two, our monthly payment, four hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars, twenty-four cents. Treasurer, Kennebec County, this is our county tax for the year, four hundred and seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars, eighty-four cents. And Treasurer, State of Maine, for motor vehicle licenses, plates and fees, twelve thousand four hundred and one dollars, twenty-nine cents.
Move, we approve the warrant.
Second.
Number nine. Till the motion by Harold, second by Kent, to approve warrant number nine. All those in favor? Thank you.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
All those in favor?